Welcome to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole for September 15th, 2020. I'm Diane Turner, the Vice Chair. Rosalba Dominguez has been excused. The rest of the council members are present. So what we'll start with is the prepared statement that everybody's probably getting tired of, but it's important. So here we go. This meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code 52-4-2074 due to infectious disease COVID-19 novel coronavirus. The council chair has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location because of physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The public may view the meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or at www.facebook.com/murraycityutah backslash citizen comments or public hearing comments may be submitted, but this is for when we have the council meeting. Let's see. So we'll talk about that when we get to the council meeting. But is that it, Jam? Is that all that we need to say about about the meeting area, the electronic meeting? I guess so. All right, we'll start the meeting.
That's fine.
Okay, we'll start the meeting and first on the agenda is the Committee of the Whole minutes for August 4th, 2020. Are there any questions, additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I have I have one minutes correction on August 4th. I'd like to correct some information in the minutes during the presentation of the UAM small modular reactor on page 2, paragraph 1. Under the presentation, it was stated that the city committed approximately $750,000 plus another $20,000 to the small modular reactor up to this point. I verified and after verification, the actual amount committed at this point is approximately $330,000 with no money out of pocket. So with that correction or addition, I'd like to submit the correction and move to approve the minutes as corrected.
The minutes were correct because that's what I said. I was inaccurate.
Yeah, I'm just, well, whoever was inaccurate, I'd like to make sure.
That was me.
Okay.
I know. That was that was me, but that wasn't because the minutes were inaccurate. That was because I was inaccurate. I misstated that.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do is correct that misstatement.
Okay. Sounds good.
With that, I move to approve the minutes.
All right. Do we have second?
I will second that.
Sounds good. Jennifer, would you take the role, please?
Mr. House?
Aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go on to the discussion items. The first one is the solid waste contract services, RFP, and Danny Astle and Russ Cackela will be the presenters. Danny?
I have to remember to unmute myself here. So thank you, council, for taking the time this evening. We wanted to, I have Russ with us in case I flub up and misstate something, so he'll correct me. So we are, our contract with our solid waste provider is about to end at the end of the year. So in anticipation of that contract ending, we need to get moving very quickly here to make sure that we get an RFP out and to make sure that those that are interested in bidding can propose something and be ready by the beginning of the new year. So our discussion this evening is just talking about the services that we currently have under the contract and what the city provides outside of the contract. And then last of all is maybe a discussion if there are other things you want us to consider to be added in that proposal or that RFP. So tonight, basically, our current hauler has that contract is ACE disposal. Our landfill, of course, is the Transjordan landfill. This contract began in, I believe it actually started in January of 2016, or yeah, 2016. And it was a five-year contract and it will run until the end of December 31st of this year. So we're looking at another three to five-year period of time for this next contract. And there's some things that are playing out, so that's why we're saying three to five years. As you know, we have the automated curbside pickup just for regular first and second cans as well as recycling once a week. And they're allowed to have as many as two cans there as well. The solid waste collection, and there's some information there as part of that contract and the costs and associated with it. But we've put the cost of what we currently pay right now. And it was, and I think in the note there that I did put on the recycling as we currently have a 25% contamination rate, and it's actually between 25 and 30% is what we currently are at right now, just to let you know. So we can do better with recycling, but that's what it is. We also include in the contract services, all of Murray City properties are picked up by the same hauler. We have the leaf bag collection and disposal that takes place during the fall, during three months of the year. And you can, we did put a cost there. Basically, it's about $3,300 to $3,500 a year for those leaves. And we have a couple of areas where those drop-off points are. And then we have the roll-off dumpster. And the roll-off dumpsters, in the information we sent you, it has, they cost $200 and it's a two-day rental. But, and then I was looking at the total amount, the fees, and it was $3,700. It didn't come out to an even number, but what happens is, is that oftentimes there are those individuals who take advantage of the system and don't follow the rules. And so sometimes the tipping fee is a little bit more, and that's why the cost didn't break down to exactly an even amount as the $200 would present. So, and then the green waste trailer program, we run that. And so that's a city program, not part of the contract services. But the glass collection and disposal is part of the city services. And we have two collection points where we have dumpsters that are dropped off and citizens can drop off their glass at those sites. So, and then of course, the other services that we offer, we partner with the Salt Lake County landfill and they have, so we've become a satellite site for ABOP, which is antifreeze, batteries, oil, and paint. So those are the four things that we're allowed to accept at this location. And they come each week and service that site. But we allow the people to come into our compound to drop those off. And right now, under the COVID issues, it's once a week on Friday afternoons, as we allow that. And the reason we've done that is just because of the amount of people that we anticipated. And we were right to do what we did instead of having people come upstairs like we have and have all these people going in and out of our building. We have provided people, our own employees in our yard, and we direct people to where they're at. They fill out the forms for the people so that there's not a lot of transfer and, you know, touching and things like that. So we're trying to provide a safe service right now, but we can only do it once a week because it takes two to three people to do that. So, but the numbers have been very high. The first week we did it, 46 people showed. The next week it was around 38, and this last week was a little over, right at 40. So the numbers are still high, so we're still waiting for those numbers to start coming down on those Fridays before we start offering a way to come into the building or just to be buzzed in. So anyway, we have the recycle. We have investigated, in the past, we've investigated recycling cans in the park. And what we found out during that study, Russ could probably speak to this more because he did a lot of the research. But the research was is that the contamination rate was so high that not a single thing would end up going to the recycler. It would all go to the landfill anyway. And since we're paying more money for the recycler to send that to the landfill, it didn't make a lot of sense not to just put it in the garbage. So, and then we have the Christmas tree disposal, so there's drop-off sites in our parks. And you probably are aware that we're allowing citizens to drop off trees in a couple of park sites right now that have fallen as a result of the windstorm. That's basically where we do, where we allow them to drop off the Christmas trees. And then the power department comes and chips up those trees. And then we bring those chips either down here, those chips will go to Central Valley. And then the parks, the garbage in the park itself, the solid waste fund purchased a garbage truck. And so the parks could maintain and collect the garbage when it needed to be collected and not have to call the contractor every time they felt like that it needed to be. And so they can do their own maintenance or empty those cans more often as they need. And then they provide the employee that dumps that garbage as well. So the other things that we have investigated in the past is the curbside yard waste. And when we investigated that, it was rather expensive, you know, at the beginning of the last contract. But what we have found out is that our landfill cannot handle the amount of green waste or yard waste that would come to them. So that's really off the table. We can't even look at that right now. There is an option for a curbside glass collection, but that glass collection is an individual option. And it's from a third party, so none of the haulers will pick up glass right now. But this group, this company is called Momentum. They do provide a curbside service, but they don't provide any other garbage hauling or anything like that. And then, so the other thing is, just wanted to let you know is that the recycling, again, our recycling rate for the contaminated, so basically 25 to 30% of all of our recycling that we send to the recycler through ACE gets hauled out and hauled to the landfill. And that is at a tipping rate of $60 per ton. The other side of that is our standard landfill rate is only $18 a ton. So we can, you know, if we can get people to recycle better, that's great. But otherwise, it costs us a lot of money to maintain that. So I did want to mention that we had a conversation with Lost Edge Front and Waste and Recycling. And my conversation with them was with Pam Roberts, their general manager. She thought about that. She looked at bidding on our garbage the last time. But the one thing that she found that we couldn't kind of get over was is that we would have to join the district. And then we would be under, we would, once you're in the district, you're always in the district. You can't pull away from the district. So therein lies the problem. Once we go in, we can't go out. And talking to her about would they be willing not to do that and still provide that service? And the board has not been willing to do that up to this point. And so she didn't feel like that that was an option. So, so the weekly services that we would naturally include in our request for proposal for 2021 through 2025 would be weekly residential refuge collection and disposal, weekly residential recycling collection and disposal, as well as giving us a price for a bi-weekly recycling collection and disposal service. And then solid waste collection from our city properties, of course, glass collection, leaf bag collection, and the roll-off dumpster program. So those are the things that we would, the services that we currently are providing. And so in addition to that, the potential is maybe a neighborhood cleanup program or offering even a recycling opt-out program. There's some interesting things about the opt-out program. What we have found is in discussions with haulers or with these companies, they don't really save you any money. If people opt out, they still have to drive through, you know, the neighborhoods anyway. And so the cost is going to be very, very much the same. And then if we wanted to look at any additional glass collection areas as an option. And so those are the things that we just kind of wanted to share with you tonight. And if there's something that you wanted us specifically out of these potential ones or others that you have thought about that you want us to investigate as part of this RFP.
Thank you, Danny. Are there questions from the council? I have a couple of questions. Okay, go ahead, Kat.
Sorry. So my questions were, when you were talking about the glass opt-in, and I'm sorry if I wasn't following correctly, but was that an option sort of that we would provide the information for, but residents would buy in on their own to have that recycling pickup service? Is that what you were mentioning earlier?
Yes, that is correct. They would contact Momentum and they would work with them directly for that service if they wanted it.
Okay, and that's just, we would just make that information available, but is there a cost to the city for letting residents know about it, or they just do it independently?
No cost to us, except for, you know, just getting information. Maybe a mail-in, but other than that, no, no cost.
Okay, well, that's pretty great. And then my other question was, I think you said maybe for Russ, when it comes to the park recycling, I'm just curious as to what was it different, like separating things out like paper, plastic, you know, aluminum, or was it just a general recycling bin that was full of old sandwiches? Sort of, I'd like to just know a little bit more about how that went.
Yeah, well, it's, even Salt Lake City, they do have a parks recycling out there. But you've got to hire some people to go ahead of the truck and lift lids, actually lift lids up, dive around in there and see if there's any contaminated, anything is contaminating that particular can of recyclables. You know, right now, we're struggling with recycling as it is, and that's why the costs are so high. And we're paying $70 a ton basically to tip to dump recycling. They're lighter materials, but we're still paying them prices. So there's a lot of people that are great at recycling, and they're not, you know, they do a really good job. But you and 10 of your residents, they might do a really good job, but there's three of them that don't. So they just contaminated a whole truck. So then they have to be sorted, and then half that stuff has got to go to landfill now. So, and that's a problem in a park. People just lift lids and throw stuff in, whether it's a sandwich, an ice cream. It's a place to toss it. And people ain't, that contributes when they're out there. So unless we had the money to hire inspectors to inspect recycling cans in the park. And the biggest thing is, is people rent pavilions and there's multiple rentals per day throughout the park and the park areas. And so when we go to pick up that recycling bin or a contract hauler went and picked that up, they would have to make sure that that is clean for one. And then after that party was done in that pavilion, the cans have to be emptied, both recycling and. So the cost of it is very expensive. And then they have to come back after the next, when the next pavilion is rented, so it's cleaned up for the next family or use. So, and it was so hard for these companies to even to put out the proposal because there was too many unknowns, is really what it was. So it really wasn't worth their time. If you looked at our old RFP, it just didn't work in the parks. So, and even the Parks Department, they do have a garbage collection truck. So, and they have to do that during the summer months, but they just take it all to the landfill. So, I mean, there's other things you can do that we could try to do down the road, which would be a paper, like a newspaper, because newspaper is high, and so is cardboard. But foils and stuff like that, that people think that are recyclable, they're not. They're being, they're, we're dumping them for 70, and then they're getting hauled out for 32. If they knew, we could just be taking it straight to the landfill. So this is a huge issue right now, and hopefully it gets better with time, but it's not right now. So even our weekly recycling pickups through our residential areas, I think the reason we're looking at going back to every other week because most people are pushing out empty cans or they're not even filling one in three weeks to push out to be dumped, but the truck's still running down the road. So it's hard on our infrastructure of our pavement also with these trucks out there. And maybe we can get that cost to come down. It could affect the rent. So, hope that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the information. It's really a challenging education piece, I think. I'll just say one last thing and then I'll mute while others ask questions or share just that what I've heard most from my residents is they want for neighborhood cleanup program, whether it's annually or fall and spring. So that's definitely something that I'd like to be at least considered on the next one. But I'll mute and let others share.
Are there other questions?
I just will second what Kat said about the, what'd you say, annual or biannual or whatever? I have had a lot of requests for that, so, so anyway.
Any other?
We'll definitely, we'll put that on there as the neighborhood cleanup program.
Great. Danny, I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, does ACE have an education program? Do they have, do they have that as part of their budget for recycling? Do they do an education?
Yeah, they do have an education person that's assigned to that, a full-time person. And they'll come out and do any kind of education. They send us mailers and different things all the time that we send out. We use our social media as well to send those out. And so, yeah, there are things. The hard thing is, is that when we talk about education, you have to have boots on the ground, meaning that you need people going door-to-door and talking to people. And larger cities, you know, have that capability, but, you know, we just don't have that capability here.
Okay. Also, we're talking about ACE, which is the provider for 9th East and below in Murray, correct? And then above that is Wolford. And we're not concerned about their contract at this point. Is that correct?
Right.
All right. I wish there was more education. That's, you know, I'm sure we all do. So anything, anything we can do to encourage that, or I don't know if we could, I don't know. Maybe we should, yes?
I just know, and I know we've talked about it, and I don't know the answer that we got. I can't remember. But I know other cities do the information on the garbage can lid that tells you what you can put in and what, I don't know, honestly, I haven't seen it. I just know a couple of our kids have had it. And because, you know, like Diane said, well, really what Russ and Danny have said too, that people just do not seem to have a clue, not all, but those that are aware, and like I am now, probably more because of Diane, I'm very aware of recycling and I do it all the time. I mean, I hang, I know people don't do this, but I hang things out on the fence to dry up the glasses and that because you want it to be dry when you put it in. But I bet you anything, majority of people put stuff in them. And when I say majority, I really believe majority. I'd like to say no, not the majority, but I just know that, like Diane said, education is huge on that. And I know you guys are doing it. I just don't know if there's something we can do on the garbage can lids.
Yeah, and you know what, we are given things that can be done and that has been done in the past. However, what happens inevitably, it will change the very next month. That's the hard part, is to keep up with recycling and.
That was the answer. That was, I think Russ said that. It changes all the time.
It does.
It's a moving target, so you pay something or you go rivet it to the top of a can, what's acceptable now? It's all based on the commodity, what's for sale. So, you know, maybe 1 through 3 plastics good right now, and maybe 4, 5, and 6 next year will be good. To go back and remove them and replace them or print them, or have them even stamped into the top of your can, that's what it used to be. Some of them things that are stamped on the moldy cans, that's not recyclable anymore. Egg cartons and foam and stuff like that, or garden hoses that people think it's rubber. It's not rub, it's not recyclable. So there is an education program that's out there, and you know, and the target age is the fourth graders. And we do that. We do that at Earth Day. We send things out to the fourth grade teachers. And Transjordan has a full-time employee that promotes that and tries to get that information out. So it's just a moving target, Brett, and maybe that'll change in the future. We hope it does.
Awesome. Thank you, Russ.
Yeah.
So just last of all, Diana, just like to mention that all of the services that are provided through our contractor, as well as the services like the green waste trailers that the city does, all of those services and. Um, all of those services, including picking up the garbage that, that, that's in the parks, that's picking up the garbage that, that gets thrown out on the road. All of that, um, is funded by the fees that, um, we collect. So, so all of the, you know, whatever fees we charge, it, it takes care of every single thing, including maintaining and buying that garbage truck that the parks uses. And so everybody benefits from those and, and so I just wanted to make sure that you understand that the fees that we charge aren't just for the hauler. They're also for all the other services that we're providing.
Great.
Thanks for your.
Thank you, Danny. We really appreciate your information and anything we can do to help with, uh, you know, providing more information and encouraging recycling. I know we'd all like to do it, so. We wish us a lot in that regard.
Okay.
All right, take care. Thank you. All right, now we're on number two, which is revision to chapter seventeen point six five, beekeeping standards. Melinda Greenwood. Melinda?
All right, so we are going to discuss today beekeeping standards. This is an ordinance the city has had in place for a while. And I was not here when changes were last made and my understanding is that the changes we put in place several years ago really made it difficult for anyone who wanted to have beehives at their home to implement that. So we have proposed changes that really can be categorized into three sections today. The first one is that we will, we will shift the regulatory and compliance back to Utah State and Salt Lake County Health Department where it should be. Uh, we will also require, if this is passed, that the hives be licensed through the state and the county, and we would not require individual licensing through Murray City. And then lastly, the change would allow for beekeeping to be on all properties that have a single family residence. Currently, they are allowed in all single family residential zones. So this is a bit of a shift and would accommodate zones such as the residential neighborhood business zone where that zone could have a single family residence on it or a lot could, could have a business. So in this case, the change we are recommending is that all properties, all lots that have a single family dwelling on it would be allowed to have bees. So just a little bit of background, the Utah's, the state of Utah has a Bee Inspection Act. And there's several different requirements there. State code requires that not only a state have a registered or an employed apiarist, but the counties have an apiarist, which is a, a bee expert. And, um, so the Bee Inspection Act, you can see here, has several different requirements. Uh, any person who has hives needs to be registered with the state. Their location needs to be identified.
Melinda, do you mean to be on the next slide?
Uh, yes, am I not?
I can only see beekeeping standards, but not the inspection act.
Oh. Is it not shifting on the screen?
Not me.
Okay, let me, let me just stop sharing and try that again. That's weird. Um, thanks for letting me know.
Yes.
So. Just try that again. All right, so do you, what, do you now see the?
No, it's still the beekeeping standards.
Okay.
There you go.
There it is. All right.
Sorry, I don't know. I don't know why that happened, um, because it shifted on my screen, but not on the shared screen for some reason. Uh, okay, so I was going over, there's just a few, um, these are some of the highlights of the requirements that the state has in their inspection act. Um, it does allow that the county bee inspector have access to conduct an annual inspection. And then if there are issues with that inspection, the apiarist can, um, essentially assign a treatment to whatever the issue they identify. And then there's an appeal process if a beekeeper is unhappy with the outcome of that inspection. And then in addition to the Utah Bee Inspection Act, again, this is just some good background information. Salt Lake County Health, uh, Department also has specific requirements for honeybee management. So, um, that gets into a little bit more detail and talks about the manner of maintaining those hives. They have to be done in a safe manner. They talk about flight patterns. A hive needs to be supplied with adequate water through a certain time of the year when they're most active. Hives need to be located, so, um, they're not in the way of where public access is and then, um, if they are locating hives on someone else's property, they have to have permission from the property owner to do that. So in our ordinance, we do have limitations on the quantities of hives based on the lot size. And our smaller lots in Murray, anything between four thousand, eight thousand square feet wouldn't be allowed any more than two hives. Nine thousand square feet could have three hives and then up to ten thousand square feet could have ten. Eleven thousand square feet lots could have five and anything that was twelve thousand square feet or more, uh, that's getting into about a third of an acre, they could have about six hi, or no more than six hives, excuse me. Um, so this item was held at the, or this item was heard by the planning commission at the last planning commission, or the August twentieth planning commission meeting. There were not any public comments that received, that were received and the planning commission did vote six zero to send a positive recommendation of approval to the city council. I did also want to add that we have contacted, our staff has contacted both the state Department of Agriculture, Agriculture and also the, uh, the Salt Lake County Health Department. And we have talked through these changes and revisions with both the state and the county, and they are supportive of these changes, um, and felt that the, the implementation of the ordinance we put in place several years ago really was restrictive. And this would have been, um, their preferred approach that, uh, last time around. So we do have their support and felt like it was important to let you know that. The, uh, planning commission found the following findings of fact, that the text amendment is considered, um, based on the characteristics of practical application oversight from those with expertise. And again, that's when I'm speaking about the state, uh, apiarist and the department, or excuse me, this Salt Lake County Health Department. The proposed text amendment is consistent with title seventeen, Murray City Land Use Ordinance. We also feel that it is consistent with the goals and policies of the Murray City General Plan. And the text amendments will also allow Murray citizens and residents the ability to have apiaries in conjunction with their residential dwellings in all zones. So again, the staff recommendation and the planning commission recommendation is that city council approve the proposed amendments to title seventeen point six five beekeeping standards as we have presented today. And then the plan is for this to come back to the city council for a public hearing, which would be scheduled at the next city council meeting, which I believe is October fifth. So with that, I'll stop, uh, sharing my screen. And if you have any questions, I would like to try and answer them. And then we also have Jared Hall, our planning manager here, who has a little bit more longevity with this particular topic than I do. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
If I might, Diane?
Sure.
I've got a couple of questions. We've taken out, and I understand, you know, the burdensome regulations, but we've taken out all the safeguards, the training and everything. I assume the state has most of that in there. Or the state or the county has most of those regulations, like a positive barrier uh, between the hives and the neighbor's yard and things like that.
So Melinda, can I jump in there for one second?
Yeah.
So they, they do, um, the, the state and county have some regulations regarding the placement of the hive and barriers, flyway, they call them flyway barriers to make sure the bees aren't attracted to something on another lot and create a nuisance. And basically theirs is broad enough to say if, if anything becomes a nuisance that they see as a nuisance, they can go in as a state or the county and, and deal with it in whatever way they see fit. So, yeah, we, we have some of them, they're less specific than ours were, that's true. But they still have the ability to deal with them and the requirement for the flyway barrier, yes.
Okay, and I, and you know, that's, that's good. I, I still think we ought to have a point person in the city, because if you ever tried to go into the black hole of the state or even the county, as a citizen, sometimes you go in there and you never come back out. So if we're going to, uh, do this, I think there, there should be someone in the city that our residents can contact and help navigate whatever, whatever problems they may have.
And I, I would totally agree with that, not having had to deal with the county, um, from, from the private end. But we, we wanted our connection to it from code enforcement to be as minimal as possible, just because we don't have the expertise of the staff. But Mark and myself, Mark Born and myself would still be definitely people receiving those complaints and working with the county to coordinate response, so they wouldn't ignore us as much as private citizens, we would hope. But there, I, I have to say too, Melinda mentioned that we've been talking with the Department of Agriculture and the, the beekeeping folks in Salt Lake County. And they, they're into this stuff a lot. There's only a few of them, but they're very heavy into it. So, um, we wanted to establish that relationship early so that when we turn sort of, not turned enforcement over to them, but coordinated with them for enforcement, rather than trying to do it ourselves, we already had a relationship. So I think it'll go well.
Yeah, and you just hit one of the, one of the nails on the head. I mean, we have a great U O S in the state of Utah, where we only have three or four inspectors, so.
Right.
You know, so it gets very frustrating. So if we have somebody that a citizen, somebody calls me with a problem, I can call and you can help, or someone in the city can help them navigate that, then I think we're, we're way ahead of it.
Yep, that would still be Mark and, Mark and me in our division here for us.
I, I did also, I, sorry, I failed to point out, but we do have a provision in the proposed ordinance that states if there's anything that's in conflict with, um, our ordinance or the county regulations or the state ordinance, that the most restrictive of those would apply. So I think that's a, a benefit. And especially as, uh, time goes on and the state or the county makes amendments to their regulations, um, we're still protected, don't have to go back and revise our own regu, our, our ordinance to keep in, in pace with those changes that they would make.
That sounds good. Any further questions?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Um, first I spoke with one of our local Murray, uh, beekeeper expert people and they're really grateful for the change and I'm always in favor of if there's an expert out there regulate, regulating it already, you know, to let them do the heavy lifting. But, um, so I have two questions. One is when we say hive, I've seen they look like dressers, right? They have the drawers. Is a hive the drawer or the stack? When we're talking about how much they can have?
Hive is the stack.
It's the whole stack. So it could have any amount of drawers in it, is that?
Well, typically, and this is, it's an interesting thing and it's, it's kind of a moving target answer or a question, but the a hive is a, is a stack of drawers and they're typically no more than three. So if you had one, the beekeepers, the apiarists for the, yeah, apiarists from the state consider a stack of six to probably be two hives. Um, but three is generally considered a hive.
I'm learning so much.
More than you want to know probably by the end of it, right?
Love it. Um, really do. My, my other question is in looking at, um, you provided so much great information, thank you, on what other cities are doing. Um, but most of them have it starting, um, allowing the hives at around eight thousand square feet. Um, and so what's the rationale for allowing it for any amount as for footage in residential?
So when we were looking at it, um, at, at first and talking, we started out by just talking to the state, uh, D O A people and to the county. And they didn't have any, we asked if we should be concerned about size of lots and, and their, their recommendation was not to worry about it at all, just to say you can have hives on residential lots. And that the size wouldn't be a consideration, but we really felt like it would make everybody uncomfortable to just open it completely. We didn't want to see anybody's backyard completely covered with stacks of, of hives, so. And we don't have very many lots in Murray that are going to be as small as four thousand, but on Box Elder Street and Miller Street and Regal Street, some of those, you're going to have some forty-eight hundred and five thousand, fifty-five hundred square foot lots. So we wanted to make sure that they weren't left out of the possibility of having a single hive or a couple of hives. Um, just because they were smaller lots when the state folks that are experts in it didn't see it as a concern at all. So that's really the only rationale we used in that case.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, we're running late, so thanks for the information. We really do appreciate it. And we better get going, um. We're to number three, the U M's Carbon Free Power Project, Blaine Hackey. Blaine, there you are.
Can it, here we go. Let me share my screen. Okay, can you hear me, Diane?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm fresh out of the monthly U M's meeting just minutes ago, um, where the news that they've extended the C F P P deadline from September thirtieth to the end of October. And the reason for that was some funding from D O E that has not, uh, shown up yet. And they felt that, uh, the U M's members involved with the C F P P project would need a little extra time to make wise decision. So I guess Diane, the imminent decision on the council to vote next Monday, and that was what we were going to do, i- is no longer imminent. We can schedule that for another, I guess we could schedule that depending on what you want to do in October. Um, and, uh, anyway, there's, there's a delay in, in the decision for, for the council. Uh, I think it's a wise decision that we delayed it because the D O E funding that I'll talk about here in just a moment is, is the key part to this whole project working. And without the D O E funding, no council member should probably vote for this project without that D O E funding. So maybe Diane, I'll throw it back at you if I could to maybe, um, to continue with my presentation tonight, I've still got, you know, forty-five minutes or so I could explain the pros and the cons and where I'm coming from on this project. But just know to the council that, uh, the September twenty-first meeting, we can still hold it and make the vote if you want, but I think you'd probably want to move that to October. What's your thoughts?
Um, I would prefer that we just continue on the way we're doing it. Uh, what council, what are you thinking?
Uh, uh, I'll go first if it's okay, and I, I think I'd like to have, I didn't, you know, this is all new, but I'd like to have some time, I mean, I, I felt a little rushed, I know, when we say a little rushed, we've been talking about this. But I have, there's a lot of information and the D O E is a biggest, a big thing for me, huge. And so, I, I mean, i- if, if it doesn't hurt us to go to our sec, what's our second meeting in October? I don't even know when it is. Does anybody see it?
Jan?
Right, it's the twentieth.
So that gives almost two weeks before, because you said the end of thirty-first of October, Blaine, you said?
Blaine?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Is it the thirty-first of October that the deadline is now?
You know, I've got Doug Hunter on the line as well. I had to go away from the meeting before the meeting was even held. Doug, can you chime in just a minute and explain the situation?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it is the thirty-first of October. You're correct, Brett.
Okay, thank you.
How about that?
Okay, I, I, I'm going to agree with Brett. If there's no hurry, there's no reason having it on the twenty-first. If we don't have all the information and if there isn't any funding from the D O E by the thirty-first, I think that pretty much says what all of us are thinking, but I think we have to, to wait and see exactly where that ends up. are thinking. But I think we have to to wait and see exactly where that ends up.
Thank you, Dale. Kat?
Um I appreciate the uh ability to move it to either Tuesday in October. Um primarily because that's when residents are used to our public meetings happening. And so I think for the most of them being able to tune in, to watch it live and to send in public comments that having it during a regularly scheduled uh meeting uh would be my preference.
Okay. Sounds good. Then that's what we'll do.
So so the second part of that, Diane, do you want me to go ahead and present my presentation as is, or do you want me to present it in October?
Well, what would you prefer?
Um.
You want to get it over with, or do you want? Do you think you might have something more that you can present or?
I I think I'm ready to present. I think I am. And I don't know which is a bigger hornet's nest, what we just talked about with the bees or this, but we are talking nuclear. Seems to be a little bit of a point. So so with that, um if it's okay with council, I'll go ahead and present as if this was the usual day and we'll move forward.
Okay, any objections? Okay. Thank you, Blaine.
Okay. I am going to share my screen. How about that? Okay. Uh first of all, I want to thank the mayor for his support and the council for for listening uh to me about this nuclear. We've been working on this for years. And I know that you have done some of your footwork as well. You've attended a lot of the meetings. And we've got to make a decision here in the next month. Uh I've invited Doug Hunter to be online in case there's any uh questions from the U M's perspective that I I might have missed or that I might uh misconstrue or whatever the case may be. So with that in mind, in October, when we vote to uh continue with this project or otherwise, there's three things we need to think about in October when we do this. There'll be three resolutions that will be given to you. One will be um a resolution by the council to keep the status quo and keep the fourteen thousand kilowatts that we have already subscribed to. And by resolution, we'll continue on with the project. The resolution two will be something similar, but maybe we'll maybe we'll move our fourteen thousand entitlement down to five thousand or ten thousand or whatever the case may be. Uh and the third resolution would be if we decide to walk away from the project and uh move on with some other process. So those are the three resolutions that you will have um in October. And just whatever day we decide to do that, that's what's gonna happen. I hope tonight that we can answer some of your questions and maybe reemphasize and reiterate the need for this project. And I hope to give you a balanced opinion of what we're gonna do here. I I I think there's a lot of rumors out there, a lot of misconceptions that you might have, and I've been caught up a little bit into the frenzy of some of the comments on Facebook and that type of thing. Uh but let me say that any project that we have, whether it be electrical or otherwise, has its bumps and bruises. Uh like, for example, the City Hall project that we're going in right now. I mean, it hasn't been a a clear pathway for that. I haven't been directly involved in that, but I know that there's been bruises and bumps and and twists and turns for that project, just like this project that we're talking about with the small modular reactors. Uh there those bumps and bruises, and there continue to be bumps and bruises as as evidenced by our fluid flexibility tonight to move a meeting to October. Last week, the council presented me with a bunch of questions and I thought they were very good questions that they wanted answered uh tonight. And so for the next little while, I want to answer some of those questions. And if if nothing else, I think this is gonna be a informative night, especially for for Kat, the new council member. And Resolve, if you're listening in, uh as to what happens with the power department, how we buy power and how we plan ahead and those types of things. So we're here for a reason and I, we're here because in a nutshell, we need another power plant. In ten or fifteen years, or maybe fifteen or twenty years, we're not quite sure. We're gonna have to replace an uh an ongoing or an older coal-fired power plant. And we need to um to find uh a renewable, perhaps a renewable, perhaps a clean one, perhaps a cost-effective, manageable one. We had U M's look into these things and they've looked on the grid. And they realized that uh there's not a whole lot of uh of of planning or uh constructing of big power plants out in the West, West United States. U M's came back with the idea and the the uh formative strategy that we would go into small nuclear reactors. This was eight, nine, ten years ago, perhaps. Uh and so and so that's what we're going to look, talk about tonight. Tonight, I want to talk about our needs, long term, short term. I want to talk about the S M R project. I want to talk about our partners, the D O E, New Scale Floor. And any last minute modifications that we have received. Things have changed a little bit since I've talked to you as a council. In fact, things have changed as of, since I've talked to the mayor last week, although I did inform him today of some of the moves. And last of all, I want to give the pros and cons. I want to give you my own list of pros and cons as far as you know, what's gonna happen here, how I feel about the project and whether I recommend moving on or not. Um I'll I'll pause occasionally for questions or answers or whatever the case might be. Jan, I don't know if you can give me a thumbs up or down if people put their hand up, or I don't know how that works, but. So let's talk about Murray's resource mix. That's one of the questions that the council asked in the memo last week is where does Murray get their power from? Well, uh our 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 variety of resources is is quite varied. We have renewables, we have coal-fired, we have natural gas. We have, we have methane-produced uh power, which is something that nobody else in the state has. Uh we're benefiting by some of the decisions that were made a hundred years ago by some of the council members and some of the people in our community as they started their own utility. And then they entered into resources like um the the C R S P resource and those types of things. Our biggest resource is the Hunter Resource. It's a coal-fired plant near Price, Utah. It, there was a study done recently that gave a clean bill of health to run that plant till twenty forty two. Now, that plant is already thirty years old and they've taken real good care of that plant. Uh we have uh ownership of twenty one megawatts, I think it is, in that plant. With a plant that old, uh you you kind of cross your fingers and hope it moves on and and performs for you. The study we received said that it would last till twenty forty two. Our, a big concern probably isn't the structure of the plant, it's more the legislation that's gonna be forced on the Hunter Power Plant. We're hearing things from the state, state implementation plan, as well as legislatively the regional haze legislation and policy that might cause the agent of the plant, which is Rocky Mountain Power, the quasi-owner of the plant, to put hundreds of millions of dollars worth of scrubbers on that plant. Uh and if that's the case, uh Rocky Mountain Power has told us they're gonna not do it and they're gonna walk away from the plant. So that's our big stumbling block on the Hunter Power Plant is will we be able to run it legislatively in twenty years? If we lose the Hunter Plant, we're gonna have to scramble for some power from somewhere. That's why I'm bringing a resource like the S M Rs to you. It's a resource that would fit right into the Hunter Plant and we can move on without any problems. Number two is our crisp resource, the Colorado River Storage Project. We get about twenty five percent of our energy from the C R S P. This is one of those things that the the uh legis- or the council members in Murray looked at back in nineteen sixties and entered into a contract to bring federal hydro to the the uh the the city. At a time when it was a little more expensive than the coal and other resources, one of those risky things that they took. We have contracts out to twenty forty five on this C R S P project. Our next project is the San Juan Coal Fired Plant. This is a small, we have small ownership in this resource. And it'll be mothballed and uh done away with in about a year, maybe a year and a half, first part of twenty twenty two. Murray receives three percent of its energy from San Juan. Losing this resource is not a big issue to us, but yet it's uh energy we're gonna have to find from somewhere else. Our next resource that we call on sometimes is the I P A resource. This is located out by Delta, Utah. We entered into this contract back in the eighties, built the plant. And we have partners. We have twenty two Utah partners. We have six co-ops and we have six California partners with the I P A. Uh we we are the largest municipal entitlement in that plant. Now, the beauty of that plant, as we've talked about before, is it's on a seasonal callback basis. We don't have to uh exercise our rights to that plant unless we feel like we need to with the market or whatever the case may be. We haven't called back that resource in the past um seven or eight years. When we don't call back the resource, L A D W P, Los Angeles and other resources take that resource and into their own load. Um the beauty of that is if we see the need for uh that resource to come into our mix, we can call, call it back. We can call it back for six months and then go back and forth with it. That's a contract that's really one of a kind, and I'm not sure uh if there are any out there. Now, the reason why I bring up I P A is because it's coming under fire as well. As you know, we're going to refuel the I P A. We're changing it from a coal plant. Um and the expiration of that contract is in twenty twenty seven. But we're changing it into a natural gas plant. Now, Los Angeles is being the the agent and the and the workhorse on this. Um what's so interesting about that, though, is by changing it to natural gas, it of course becomes cleaner. But in order to get the Sacramento legislators and the Los Angeles legislators uh on board with this, uh they're going to have a mix of natural gas and hydrogen. They hope to start the plant up in twenty twenty five. And there are bids out already uh as far as the generator and and some of the other uh infra- infrastructure. Um what's so interesting about this, though, is they're going to build a, someone's I'm not sure if L A is, but somebody's gonna build a hydrogen-making facility right next to the plant and store the hydrogen that they make into the salt caverns that are located underneath the plant. Just by coincidence, there's salt caverns underneath there. When the plant starts in twenty twenty five, there'll be a seventy percent natural gas and a thirty percent hydrogen mix right on the out outset. And then as a- as uh as they go through the process, eventually by twenty forty five, it will be one hundred percent hydrogen. So one of the questions that was raised by the council uh was why don't we pursue hydrogen like some of the other Californian entities? Well, we are knee-deep in that process. We we are a player. We are on the Board of Directors of I P A. Uh I'm the vice chair. We know what's gonna happen there. And L A is funding it. We're gonna have a a natural gas hydrogen mixed power plant until, you know, the year twenty seventy when the contracts end. So um that is, it's kind of cutting edge, uh something this magnitude has not done very often, if it ever has. But uh using the hydrogen mix is interesting to that. Is there any questions so far? Okay, the next resource I want to talk about is our natural gas turbines. We have three turbines that are lane-plated at thirteen megawatts apiece. They are located right here, a hundred yards to the south of me where I'm speaking from here on Forty Eighth South. We run these turbines uh peak load on the summer months. During August, we ran them a lot. When we hit those hundred-degree days, we found out that the market pricing was um what, five, six hundred dollars, if not higher. And we could cheap, we could generate a lot cheaper with our natural gas turbines to buy on the market. They were saving us close to fifty to sixty thousand dollars a day by running instead of buying on the market. This is a resource that we could call on base load. And when I say that, if we were to lose another resource like Hunter, we could call on this resource to do a backup uh long term or short term. Problem with this is, though, you don't know what the natural gas prices are gonna do. Now, they can, they're very volatile, just like the the market of uh energy. Uh but it is a great resource that we rely on during the summer months especially. We also have a little hydro uh up at Cottonwood Canyon. We divert the water from Little Cottonwood Canyon to a hydro that's located by the Salt Lake Water Treatment Plant uh down by Lakai. If you know where that restaurant is, it's down in that area. Uh we have uh uh we run, we do a run of the river, meaning it's only running from, let's say, March or April to maybe October. And then there's just not enough water in there. But that fits fits real well with our summer load because we're able to use that. We also have two methane plants, one located at Trans Jordan and Salt Lake County landfill. This is a this is a P P A or a power purchase agreement with two different entities back in Michigan. They have put cat engines on these uh two landfills, they're capturing the methane from the rotting fuel, rotting refuse, watering, running garbage and processing the methane and then running it through the caterpillar engines and giving us close to seven and a half megawatts total. About seven or eight percent of our energy comes from the landfill methane plants. The only ones in uh I know of Utah that uh at least in Salt Lake County that are using that. Kind of cutting edge. Um and then we have just entered into the Navajo Large Solar Contract that will be operational in the year twenty twenty two. That'll give us power for another twenty five years um via large school, large solar. Um and that's uh reasonably priced and that was through the U M's organization as well. We found there was a strength in numbers um commodity when we purchased that. And then we have other marketers we buy from on on the market, the P X and the U M's. Uh we buy seasonal, we buy monthly deals and we go out and buy that type of stuff. So let's talk about the S M R, uh small modular reactors. Uh our main partners are the Department of Energy, New Scale Floor and the U M's Group. Uh our main partners, uh uh those are our main partners. The cost sharing of this project has been the uh the mode from day one. Uh the Department of Energy especially has a keen interest in this. They've been watching this project and they want it to work. In fact, there's bipartisan uh consent on both of uh both sides of the aisle on on the funding for this Department of Energy. We're waiting for a uh one point four billion dollar appropriation from the Department of Energy spaced out over years. The appropriation will come, we're told, and i- it's it's a key part of making this project economical. So far, these partners have spent close to four or five hundred million dollars to the nuclear licensing. And uh there's still a couple of years to go until that license is is given. To date, Murray has committed about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh into the resource of this examination. Now, we have not spent any money out of pocket. We have uh, I guess you can call it a short-term loan or a bridge loan that the U M's Group has with their other participants. Money this expanded during the licensing process will be eventually rolled into the bond when we get to constru- to the construction phase. And um this is uh the pretty important that we have these uh big spender partners, I guess you could say. Murray presently has a subscription or entitlement of fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty two kilowatts in the project. Uh this includes part of the money that we are part of the uh jump uh capacity that we uh were trying to do. Initially, D O E was in because they wanted to buy the first module outright. Yes.
Can I ask again, how many kilowatts, three hundred and?
We, let's round it, we have fourteen, fourteen thousand kilowatts or fourteen megawatts.
Say that number again, fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty two kilowatts of subscription.
Okay.
That that's our holding spot in in the big scheme of things. And all the other cities in the U M's Group uh have also subscribed into that at different, at different levels.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So instead of uh, first of all, D O E wanted to buy the first module and they were gonna do experiments with it and use it for their own load. And uh that was gonna be help to us. But then they, I guess, stepped up their game a little bit, I guess you could say. And they agreed that they wanted to be a bigger participant by helping with the capital cost of the construction of this plant to the tune of one point four billion dollars uh of of help in the construction cost. That's about twenty five, twenty-two to twenty-five percent of the plant that the D O E was going to buy outright and push this along. D O E has bigger plans for this beyond this plant. They want to build other S M R projects and they want to uh I guess proliferate the the country, if not beyond, into the world uh with this technology. So because of the funding needed, the one point four billion dollars, um we um, how can I word this? we, how can I word this? This is the, this is the, the, the first of kind technology we talked about. This, this is the maiden SMR. This is the initial plant. We needed that money, a- and thus the delay in October to get that money. Without that money, my recommendation would be that we walk away from the project. The, the 1.4 billion dollars. If, if it doesn't come, because it makes it too pricey for us to even worry about. I should mention that the 1.4 billion dollars is front-loaded, meaning that over the first years of the commitment by, by DOE, they will get some money. Doug, if you're on, can, can I call on you just for a second to maybe correct me if I've said anything wrong?
Of course. You haven't said, you, you've been right on. That's what you're, yeah.
Cool.
Sorry.
I'm used to you embellishing on things, but that's okay.
Well, if you want me to.
Why don't you take two minutes while I catch my breath?
Okay. Yeah. The, when we say it's front-loaded, we're taking the cost share, it'll be 80% of our costs in the, the first, almost the full 10, or the eight years of the, of the project is 80% coming through of our costs each year that gobble up. So there's very little of the 1.4 billion in the last four years. A nine-year award, and most, almost all the money's coming the first five years, if you will. So that, that was seen as a de-risking cash flow item with the DOE that we went to DOE. So that our out-of-pocket exposure, assuming termination for convenience would be reduced to its minimum number that we can, we could get. Obviously, they want us to have, they want us to have some skin in the game, if you will. But going through, on an ECT, I could decide to see you probably get to it, but if we had an economic competitive test lost in that same period of time, New Scale will reimburse all of our costs, 100% of our costs. So it's really combined, the two combined basically take us to a zero risk position on a failed project.
Yeah, Doug, I'll get into that a little more detail, but thanks for introducing that. Let me, let me say something right now. People and the council has asked, you know, what's the value of being the, the first, first out of the chute, you might say. And, and, you know, those are pros and cons to first of kind technology and financing. I've been asked that what happens if we wait till the second SMR comes out or the third or fourth? Are the costs going to go up or down? And, you know, the crystal ball's out. I don't, I don't know what's going to happen, but if you, if you think of it in simplistic form, simplistic ideas, a, a plant costs, this plant will cost around 6.1 billion, and 1.4 billion will come from the DOE. So that's the value of it. Without the DOE, the next group of SMRs is going to have to come up with a 6.1 billion by themselves. So simplistically, I think it's going to be around 25% higher for SMR number two. SMR City number two. So that's the value of being in right now on this maiden voyage, you might say, is to take advantage of that 25% of the plant capital costs that would be covered by DOE that they might not cover the next time. Now, we don't know exactly what's going to happen, but in simplistic form, that's the value of being first out. There was a question raised by the council, who's participating? We have 36 Utah participants, actually UAMs participants. And they include, I'm not going to mention all their names, but Heber and Keysville, Bountiful, Lehigh, Logan, Pace, and Washington City, small towns like Ephraim and Beaver. Bountiful, there's several out-of-state entities like Salmon River and Los Alamos, Wells, Nevada are all involved and interested in this project. And they all have different subscription, back to your question, Brett. They all have different subscriptions, different means or different desires of quantity they want to take from this project. It's expected that once the nuclear license is received and we're ready for construction, that there will be a lot more subscribers that will come onto this. Some, some people in the region are waiting to see what's going to happen with the nuclear license. And that's one of the reasons why subscription is not as high as we think it will eventually get to. Is people are waiting to see what's going to happen, but initially there were 213 megawatts that were subscribed. That's with the 36 people that I, I talked about. Now, you know, two entities have dropped out. That's obvious. Logan and Lehigh by city council resolution have dropped out. And I had, there's a September 30 deadline. Now it's an October deadline, but, so those are the things we're looking at. Let me explain that. What, when we had the initial entitlement we had, when we had 213 megawatts, we had 6.7% of the plant or 14 megawatts. Since those two cities have dropped out, Logan and Lehigh, they gave back 28 megawatts to the group, which means it's a 180, 185 megawatt. I think I've got my numbers right, 185. Or 13% of the plant was given back to the remaining participants. So Murray's entitlement now is still 14, but it's, at now it's around 8%, 8.3%. So I'll explain, though, how, you know, you might say that some of the remaining money is getting thrown on our shoulders. That's, that's not the case, perhaps, as I go into a little more detail. So there's a couple of recent developments that have come in the past week. The one Doug referred to in, in passing, but the three things that I caught in the past week that have been interesting is the financial models we've had up till now have shown 2018 as the $55 threshold. We gave marching orders to Doug and the UAMs Group as a board that we had to have a $55 ceiling on any entity, on, on any commodity or kilowatt hour that comes out of the plant. Or it's just too expensive for us to pursue, and that's been their marching orders and their goal from day one. And they agreed to do that in $2018, and just in the past week, they fine-tuned their numbers. They've moved interest rates around a little bit and just have sharpened the pencil a little bit. So from hereforth, we're going to refer to it in $2020, the $55, which is a benefit to our participants. That gives us two years of escalation growth or something that we don't have to contend with. The next item that I thought was a recent development that was of interest is that from hereforth, the reimbursement is guaranteed if the economic test fails in 2023. So let me put that in simplistic terms. If the council decides that they want to vote to continue with the project, no matter what entitlement number it is. And we go through till April of 2023, and it's going to be in the 1.6, 1.7 billion dollar range probably for Murray. If at the end of 2023, they run the numbers and the model shows that they can't meet the $55, it's 57 or 58 or 59. UAMs walks away from the plant, and we get 100% reimbursement from now until 2023. Now, that's a huge change to what it was just a month ago or a couple of weeks ago. I think that's almost a game changer. It's almost a, a guarantee that we will get some money back if that's the case. And the other thing was that the UAMs has agreed to have a, an off, a mid-season off-ramp, you might say. Before, we talked about April 2023 as the off-ramp, and they've agreed to reopen the budget, first part of 2022 or the last part of 2021. To see if there's anybody that is feeling uncomfortable with the project, that maybe wants to move up or down in their entitlement or, or to get out of their entitlement. The, the three-year window or two-and-a-half-year window before another off-ramp was kind of ominous to some of the members, and so they've agreed to have a mid-season or mid-phase off-ramp, which I think is huge.
Blaine, can I throw out a question?
Sure, Brett.
Okay, so our off-ramp now that you talked about, if we were to walk or take at the end of October, would be 330,000 to Murray City. Am I correct?
That, if, if, if the project continues and Murray drops out, we lose 330,000.
Okay, what, can you tell me the two figures that we would lose if we took an off-ramp? The date you said, and then is there another off-ramp you said at 2023 along with UAMs? I know if UAMs does it, no cost. But for us, two more off-ramps, what does that put us at?
Okay, so i- it's hard to say what the next commitment to Murray is going to be because we don't know what cities are going to stay in. As cities drop out, our commitment raises up a little bit on dollars, but let me round it to 1.7 million. If, if Logan and Lehigh has dropped out, Murray's commitment now is 1.7 million up until 2023. That's, that's an off-ramp. That used to be the next off-ramp. But now there's an off-ramp in between those two dates. So let's say the off-ramp is the end of 2021. We've expended, or UAMs and the group has expended half that money. 1.7 divided by two is, let's say, $900,000, $900,000. That money would be not guaranteed if the UAMs Group continued forward. So that's, that's another 900,000 on top of the 330 that we would lose. And then if we go to the end of 2023, we spend 1.7 million plus 330, it'd be $2 million loss that we would walk away from in 2023 if the UAMs Group goes forward. Doug, am I right on that?
Yes, you are. That's, that's a good depiction of it, Blaine.
Okay. I, I think, Brett, is that, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
I, I think you have to go into this project thinking where, don't, not thinking where the off-ramps are. I mean, if we're going to this project, let's get into it and let's, let's immerse ourselves into it and let's move forward. To be looking for an off-ramp or how much money we're going to save is kind of the wrong attitude, although I do understand that there, there's a matter of being comfortable and pursuing the project forth. Okay, there was a question from the council on cooling alternatives. Most nuclear plants, in fact, I think all nuclear plants that I know of are wet-cooled, meaning they are built by oceans and rivers where they can access large bodies of water. Water cycles in, it's heated, it goes back out. The two nuclear plants that we toured with the, the facility with the UAMs people were back in Maryland, the Calvert Cliffs, as well as the one up on Tri-Cities on the Columbia, both built by bodies of water, both used wet cooling, or at least that, that was through cooling. The project is going to be built up in Idaho Falls, which is not by lake, I guess you could say. So we looked at two different alternatives. One was wet cooling, one was dry cooling. We had a study done, in fact, in the meeting, the UAMs meeting held last month that was supposed to have been held in Zermatt, we had a fellow come talk about wet cooling and dry cooling alternatives, if you listen to that. The study was done and found out that both cooling could be done by this plant up in Idaho. Wet cooling needs 22,000 acre feet of water, and the dry cooling needs 2,000 acre feet of water. Both would provide the cooling needed. Both could be used, but with the situation with the water and, and just the environmental issues, it was decided the dry cooling would be used for this SMR. And that's what FLOR has used as they've pushed this licensing design on through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission is the dry cooling option. The water rights are being either, have either been purchased or are being purchased. Cooling water will not be an issue to this plant. And, and part of the reason for the dry cooling was the need for only 2,000 acre feet per year. Although it is located right on the Snake River Aqueduct, and there would be access to some water, but we've decided to go dry cooling. Well, we've talked about SMRs a little bit. Let me talk you about some of our options. I've got maybe, maybe another 10 minutes, and then I'll pass it back to, to you, Diane, of council. We do have some other alternatives that we could act on if, if we decide to walk away from the SMR, or even if we decided to stay with it. Other options out there, and, and let's hope that we can find something. I've listed a few things here of options we can possibly a bit higher with the hydrogen mix. Now, once again, we're comparing that to $55, 2020 numbers with the nuclear. So IPA would be an expensive, more expensive resource to call back, but we could do that. We could base load our, load our gas turbines. We can do it around the clock. Once again, you're at the dictate, dictates of the natural gas market. We've seen as low as $1.60 this year. We've seen as high as $12 and $13. I think Russ Cacola just mentioned about natural gas last session that we've seen some natural gas go way high. So the price of gas turbine would be somewhere between $30 and $120. We could install some cat engines out back right next to our turbines. We've also already got some bids from CAT. Now, some of the other utilities in the UAMs Group have used CAT engines. Heber, for example, has installed some of those. Cost of those, I'm, I'm just saying around $60, maybe it'd be higher. But we'd have to expand some big capital money and buy some megawatts of CAT engines. We could also add some additional gas turbines. We have three out there. We already have the bay open for three more if we wanted to do that, just a sister-type plant just across the parking lot. We could do that for about the same cost of $60 or so. We could go into more public purchase power agreements with large-scale solar or wind, or whatever the case may be as far as renewable. The cost is really fairly good right now. As you know, we just bought into the Navajo Solar just in the past months at an average price of around $29 over the life of it. Problem is, is the load factor is not big on renewables. Sun doesn't shine. We don't have production. Wind doesn't blow. We don't have production. Large-scale battery storage, I don't know a whole lot about that. I just know that it's not there yet. It's not ready. The huge Tesla batteries of the future are not there, but you know, let's keep our eye on that. It ever gets to be a reliable resource, and I, I don't know who it'll be for a while, but that is a possibility. And then there's other place, place, ways we can get power. If somebody would go out and sell us a PPA or a power purchase agreement for 30 years at $40 a megawatt hour, you know, I'd jump at that. But most marketers aren't going to go out that far. But, you know, occasionally you'll get some 10-megawatt or 10-year PPAs and, and 15-year PPAs. That's something we can look at. And one thing I mentioned, just in the minor part of that, we were in, at the Salt Lake County landfill, we were told by our supplier that there was enough methane out there that they would like to install another small engine next to the, two or three that we have out there already. It's a small one-megawatt or two-megawatt unit, but you know what? We can look into that, and every little bit helps, you might say. We could, it, it'd be a little more expensive for that. So with that, let me go over my pros and cons. How am I doing on time, Jan Lopez? Am I doing okay on time? Diana, my own?
You're doing fine. Let's see. Yeah, you've got about 15 minutes at the outset.
Okay, great. Okay, I just want to do the opinion a little bit. This is the gospel Blaine talking a little bit here as I've looked at this project. My battery's going. Can you forget the battery? I've got Greg here. My battery's starting to go, so we're going to try to. Hope it works. Let's go through with the, the con, the cons first, the things I have some concerns about. One is the subscription level for the participants is, is, is low. We're losing some members. We would like it to be fully subscribed. I'm going to move over to a plug, guys. Sorry about this. Okay, great. That's why I have a good assistant now. There we go. It's presently at 185 megawatts. It's a 720-megawatt plant with low participation from other cities. The next phase of obligation is bigger for us, although we have learned that it's going to be guaranteed. I have concerns about, about having an anchor tenant as far as a subscriber, a huge Arizona Power or a, or a BPA or, or a SMUD. Something that will take a big chunk of it. A little bit worried about that. I'm, I'm worried that some of the larger entities aren't signing up. And we've learned that some of the larger entities will sign up eventually and Rocky Mountain Power. and Rocky Mountain Power is one that's been, uh, shown to, shown some interest, but because of their ties to having to bring a lot of renewables in, their, their hands are tied a little bit. But hopefully that will come. I'm concerned that the DOE funding hasn't come. It's probably my biggest concern right now. It's being delayed, uh, not, we have been told it's not coming, it's just been delayed. And we like the federal government to work fast, but it's just not happening. Uh, I, I worry a little bit about meeting, uh, well, I, I worried about the September thirtieth deadline and, and now the October deadline, we'll, we'll see what happens there, but. But I'm also concerned about the appropriations from henceforth, next year, the following year, the following year are going to be slow as well. And if that happens, then the scraps will have to be picked up until that federal money comes in. Uh, just a concern I have personally, I don't know if that same level of concern is on the UAMs level. I also wonder what the cost of the next plant will be. Now, will it be, uh, very like, uh, uh, I guess, cost is, is this first plant? I, I would think not. I think the second plant would be a little more expensive because of the DOE subsidy, but, uh, is it worth the risk for number one? Or should we wait for the second plant to come out? Uh, no, that's, that's something we can think about. The plant costs have increased. Uh, that's fairly common knowledge to you, the council. It's up to six point one billion dollars for this plant. It's increased, but that comes with most projects. As you build a plant of any size, you start out with an estimate and as you go through class one, two, and three bids or estimates, you, you sharpen your pencil and you fine tune, uh, that numbers and, but there's been some sizable increases in the plant that worries me. But beyond all this, I think if we, if we think about it, all we have to worry about is can a fifty five dollar resource be provided to us in the year twenty twenty nine or twenty thirty? If they can read, they meaning the UAMs and the partners, if they can give us a fifty five dollar resource guaranteed in twenty twenty dollars, that's all we need to worry about. Uh, who, who cares how much the plant costs, you might say? But if they can give us a fifty five dollar commodity, I'm, I'm interested. Okay, what I like about the plant? Well, first of all, the technology doesn't scare me at all personally. Uh, I think the world is watching this. I think, uh, an SMR will be built. SMRs on a smaller scale are built in, in some range or whatever the case may be. And I think if we're going to get into nuclear, we need to, we need to be a player and we need to take advantage of the twenty five percent, uh, DOE appropriations offer. I, I like it because it will replace our Hunter resource. I like it because it's stable. It will follow the renewables that we may bring on, the, the five megawatts of Navajo we just brought on. We need to find some way to pick up the slack on that. This, this resource would fit right into that. Uh, I, I think Murray is well situated for the next ten or fifteen years. If we're doing nothing, I, I think we've got enough resources and enough options, uh, unless the world falls apart, of course, that we can cover ourselves. But it's the twenty years and beyond timeframe that's really got me worried. Should we pass up this opportunity now and pick up something later on? Well, maybe that's our decision we have to make. And if it's nuclear, fine. If it's something else, that's fine too. Maybe, maybe this hydrogen mix is going to be something that we really want. Nuclear would diversify our portfolio. We've already got a lot of eggs in our basket from methane, coal, large, small hydro. And nuclear would just bring another diverse, uh, diversity. And I think UAMs has done their best on giving us some safeguards as far as, you know, trying to make it feasible and comfortable for us to be included. And the fifty five dollar cap and the, the off-ramps, you don't find that in too many pla- uh, buildings that are being built or many plants are being built, all these off-ramps. And if you don't feel comfortable, walk away from those types of things. One thing we have to remember, though, there's no large-scale base load plants are being built out there. Uh, nothing that's carbon-free that we're familiar with. I don't know what's going to happen. Uh, I, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow or I don't know what's going to happen in ten years from now. Uh, but I, I feel, um, comfortable that if this council decides to go this route, we can go it. Uh, my concerns, like I said, are the funding from the DOE and the fact of, uh, subscription are my big items. So these are the few thoughts that I had, you know, as I've, I've gone through. I, I know that the vote that we take in October is going to be fairly monumental. It's, it's, it's a risk. It's probably no more of a risk than nineteen thirteen when our, uh, forefathers started this company. It's probably no more of a risk than nineteen thirty when they put the diesels in, uh, this power plant to the left of me during the depression. I mean, talk about a risk. And it's probably no more risk in the sixties when we bought into Federal Hydro or in the eighties when we bought into the IPA plant. And we stuck our neck out big time on that. And there are a risk. We're going to have to take a risk perhaps to make a step forward, but. I hope I've given you a balanced approach tonight. I, I hope that, uh, you, you can call on me the next couple of weeks, uh, personally or wherever the case may be, I'd like to answer any questions. I don't have all the answers. That is basically my presentation. I, I, i- if you want a recommendation, it is don't go through with this plant unless we have the DOE funding. And that's, that's the big thing for me. Diane, with your permission, I'd like to give Doug Hunter just a minute to maybe to say some final words, if that's okay. And then I, I'm through with my presentation unless you have some questions.
Uh, okay, Doug can have a, just a few minutes, though. We're running late.
That's fine. I don't really have much. I think Blaine did an excellent job of, uh, presenting the project to you. Yeah, and I think the key is, is if not this what? And, uh, moving forward there, I'll just put this thing in the West. In the next, by twenty thirty, eighteen thousand megawatts of coal will be coming off out of the thirty five thousand megawatts of coal they're on right now. Uh, the vast majority of replacement is all solar on that. There's only fifteen hundred megawatts of gas planned in the whole Western United States. So Blaine's concern about what would the market look like? We think it'll be very expensive and, uh, it could look a lot like what happened in California in the last two months where there are outages and prices went over a thousand dollars a megawatt hour. They predicted, the CalISO predicted a twenty-two hundred megawatt shortfall this summer and it hit. And there was nothing they could do about it except raise everybody's prices by buying all the power. So I think those are the key items, I think, is really to consider. If, if you don't do this project, you need to have another plan. Another thing, I think that's all I see. So thanks, unless there's any other questions.
Are there any further questions from the council?
Yeah, if I can, Diane.
Okay.
I just want to thank Blaine for that presentation. And I agree with him. There's, we have water in Murray today because the council in nineteen fifteen bought wells or whenever it was in Cottonwood Heights. We have power because councils took a, a risk. I'm not necessarily pro-nuclear or against nuclear. What I am is pro, we need a plan. We need to find something to fill the gap. We need to make sure that the lights are on. Uh, I'll be long gone by then. I'll be playing a harp, but I still am concerned or pitchfork, yeah, sorry. I'm still concerned about where we get the power to, to power our city. Uh, solar is a great thing. Uh, hydrogen is still being developed. There's a thousand ways to do it, but we need to make sure that we have a plan to fill that gap because carbon fuel is going away. There's no doubt about it. It's gone. And there's going to be, it's up to us to make sure that we are able to have power for our citizens. You know, there's been a lot of information, a lot of misinformation. I've gotten, uh, a lot of emails about people because we have the tax commission or the Taxpayers Association. I don't want my taxes raised. This isn't tax money. This is rate payers money. Uh, I've had, I don't want my rates to go up. Well, rates are going to go up in forty years, I can guarantee it. And what we're trying to do here is make sure that we have a steady power source at the best possible price. And if this isn't it, we'll go find something else. But, you know, I know there's experts talking out on both sides of this. Like I said before, the expert I believe in sitting right there for Murray Power, he'll lead us in the right direction.
Thanks, Dale. Are there any other comments from the council? Okay. Thank you, Blaine. It's good to see you, by the way. Never see you anymore.
No, it's, I'm, I'm zooming with my wife even. This is kind of like, this, life is crazy.
I know, it's heartbreaking. Anyway, miss you and it's really good to see you and thanks for your presentation and you take care. Okay, um, now we are at the last of our discussion items, which is urban county inter-local agreement. GL, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Great. Good to see you as well.
Good to see you too. So this is, this agenda item has to do with the Community Development Block, uh, Grant Program that we've been a member of for some time. And the resolution and local agreement that will be before you now and then later tonight is, uh, for, to see whether you want to reaffirm your participation in this program. Um, this is a program that is a entitlement program that comes from the federal government and it comes directly to qualifying cities and counties um, based on population estimates, poverty rates and so forth. And it is designed principally to benefit low and moderate income persons. And in particular, the way we've used it in the past, uh, in, in many ways is to offer housing opportunities to low and moderate income persons. According to HUD's guideline, guidelines to be an urban county, you've got to have two hundred thousand population. And the way the county is able to do this is to aggregate those cities and townships that cannot qualify on their own for direct funds through inter-local agreements. And currently there are three inter-local agreements and HUD has asked that the county consolidate those into one agreement, which is before you tonight. Salt Lake County has been an urban county for the last thirty years, purposes of administrating the program. They have, um, it lasts three years and each of the three years, after the three years, they've got to recertify for another three years. And when they went through the process this time, they did this back in about June and, uh, then heard from HUD that they need to make some adjustments. So the county has hustled in the last several weeks to get this together and to get it out to all the cities and townships who may want to participate. This inter-local agreement would be a three-year term for twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three. And, uh, let me just go over quickly the agreement, uh, the, the highlights. The agreement sets out that the county is the lead entity, that they are responsible to the federal government. The county has the ultimate supervisory and administrative control. Part of the reason we do an inter-local agreement like this is they need to have your consent to participate in these programs within the city's boundaries. The county works with the cities. I, it's my understanding there's an allocation committee or committees who make recommendations as to how to use the CPG funds. And those committees are made up of representatives of the participants. Um, so when Murray gets its allocation or allocations, they have to enter into another agreement for each project with the county. And once we do that, then we are responsible to administer and control the project to, we're responsible for these expenditure funds as well as, um, complying with the regulations and federal laws. So HUD asked the county if they wouldn't consolidate this into one agreement and then to make it clear that qualification of an urban county is effective for three years, even if population or boundaries change. And they also want to make clear that generally no additional area will be, area of the county or the city would be added during that three-year qualification period. It's also important to note that once we enter into this, we are bound for that three-year term as well. One of the ways that they find, that, that HUD determines eligibility as to whether you can receive funds directly, which we have not been able to so far, is through the census. And although we think that we may exceed fifty thousand, which is the threshold for cities, we don't have the census results yet. So the, the, the deadline is coming. It's based upon the federal fiscal year, which I believe is, uh, October first through September thirtieth. And so we need to make a decision tonight to be able to meet that deadline. The county has also asked that if you're going to participate, that the resolution as well as the agreement be signed and back to them so they can get it to HUD by Monday. So it's a relatively tight deadline. I don't think there are really any, um, surprises in this. We've done this for years. Um, the term, as I said, is a three-year term from, uh, it's a three-year term that has automatic renewals for successive three-year periods up to fifty years. So this could last potentially if we decided not to do it ourselves in the future through, uh, June thirtieth, twenty seventy-one. Um, there are currently, I believe it's seven townships and ten cities. And as I said before, if you want to do this, we need to get the information to the county as soon as possible. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? Good job, GL. No questions. All right, thank you. All right, announcements, Jan.
Um, I don't have any announcements, but I just want to clarify that we will not have our meeting next Monday on the twenty first to vote on the carbon-free power project, but we will move that to October twentieth.
Um, did we decide for sure on October twentieth? I know we decided not to have it on Monday, but I'm not sure we decided on the twentieth. Council? Do you want to do it on the fifth or the twentieth? Okay, Brett?
I prefer the twentieth solely because it gives me more time to just look into and to see what others are doing. And so it gives me, gives me a better opportunity.
I agree. I agree.
Okay, Kat? That's fine with me. Okay, twentieth it is, Jan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other announcements?
No, nothing more.
Then we are adjourned.